Meeting to order, meeting the city council work session Tuesday, February fifteenth, year of our lower twenty-two. Greetings, members of this state, and to us, by the tremendous Dean Johnson.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, bless this meeting today, bless our decisions, watch over us as we try to do what's best for the citizens of Odessa, this great city, and lead it forward, make it the best it can be. Be with these one of these council members, let us all hear each other's thoughts, and weigh them carefully. Be with our citizens, and thank you for our first responders, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. We will be seated. We're gonna have a little change of the order on the agenda, we're gonna move item number ten up to number one, to discuss litigation with the city of, with city attorney and attorneys hired by the city. Cause number B dash twenty dash zero two dash zero one twenty-seven, CVA media, Texas LLC DVA, Odessa American versus the city of Odessa. Brooks?
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. The city of Odessa was pleased to receive the court's order granting its plea to the jurisdiction and dismissing the case filed against it by the Odessa Americans. The city feels this is the correct decision, given that the Odessa Americans stipulated that it had received all public information it was entitled to under the Texas Public Information Act. The city of Odessa has been and continues to be committed to promptly providing public information in accordance to the law. At this time, we have our outside counsel here to have a discussion regarding the lawsuit filed by the Odessa American and to answer some questions.
Can we have the attorney go forward? Introduce yourself, name, nominee for the record, please.
Sure. Mayor, my name is Keith Stretcher.
Mayor, my name is Aaron Dorfner.
Go ahead, Keith Stretcher.
Mayor, I think that what I would like to do is go over some of the stipulations and findings of fact that the court made.
I'm sorry, what? Yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
And I think it's important because there's a lot of statements made by one side and by the other, and I think it's really important just to get down to exactly what the court found. The court speaks for itself, it's not the city of Odessa speaking, it's not the Odessa Americans speaking, it's the court. And first, first of all, let's just, I'd like to go through them if I could, on some of these stipulations. Number four, I'm gonna wait and give it the council time to get them to front.
Keith Stretcher?
Number four, plaintiff has received all public information it is entitled to under the act. So let's just be clear right off the bat, the Odessa American got all the information they are entitled to under the Texas Public Information Act, every bit of it, every single I'd like to just go then to number six, says defendant has complied with all Texas Attorney General opinions, orders, and decisions pertaining to all information and documents requested by the plaintiff. But the court is, what the court's saying very clearly, the city of Odessa has complied with all Texas Attorney General opinions regarding information requested by the Odessa American. It's not us saying it, not anybody else, court. So let's, number one, they got all the information, number two, he complied with all Texas Attorney General opinions. Number seven, I think is important because defendant has not refused to request a current Texas Attorney General opinion on any information requested by plaintiff. So mayor, you know, nobody hit the ball, the city of Odessa requested Attorney General opinions when appropriate, every time, not sometimes, maybe they did, maybe they didn't, since defendant has not refused, it's very clear. Then I just wanna jump to number ten, and says the city released information responsive to this request on January twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, in full compliance with the Attorney General's opinion. That's the same language basically in eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and so the point is, mayor, that the city produced all the information in full compliance, not part compliance, not some compliance, but in full compliance with the Texas Attorney General opinions. Very strong statement, not some, not maybe, not my, all. And number sixteen, the defendant has disclosed and provided all of the public information and documents to the plaintiff, which were responsive to plaintiff's request. And now this, this next statement, this next, I really wanna make sure, the plaintiff, the Odessa American acknowledges receipt of the information and documents from the defendant. There's no, there's no question here, they got it, they acknowledged they got it. Seventeen, the defendant has not refused to supply any public information requested by plaintiff, no refusal, none. The plaintiff acknowledges receipt of all the information requested by plaintiff. Mayor, they got it all, they got it. So I just wanted, I wanted to go with these stipulations because this isn't Keith Stretcher talking, this isn't the Odessa American, this isn't the city of Odessa, the court, these are stipulations filed with the court, adopted by the court. And that's why I think they're so important, and this is what the case was tried on, and this is what any further action will be tried on. And the court granted the city of Odessa's plea to the jurisdiction.
Can you speak to that and put it to what exactly that means?
Go on, yes, sir. Go on to, it's a little confusion because the court denied the Odessa Americans' motion for summary judgment. That is not a final, in my opinion, that is not a final appealable order. And so people will say, well, there wasn't a decision on the merits. However, don't forget, the court granted the city of Odessa's plea to the jurisdiction, which was a determination on the merits, after the court looked at all the facts, and the court found that the city of Odessa complied in all respects with the Texas Public Information Act. It is a victory, it is a decision on the merits, it is a decision on the facts. So there's a little confusion about a denial for summary judgment, but there is no denial on a plea to the jurisdiction. The court was required by law to accept the Odessa Americans' arguments, their factual arguments, as true, and they were required to give the Odessa American every inference regarding their allegations. So even with that, the court came back and said, see, you win, you win, and they don't get any, and they don't, or they're not entitled to attorney fees. So I don't see any way to interpret that except as an absolute victory on the merits.
Do you wanna be a brat, either?
Not unless the council or the mayor has any questions, but I would like to publicly recognize the assistance that we received from the city attorney's office and city attorney Brooks, and just make sure the council knows, and I know it does, but make sure people of Odessa know how much assistance the city attorney gave us and helped us with the outcome here.
Proceed, sir. Did you want to just recognize, are you recognizing our staff?
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I thought you were gonna pop out of it.
I don't have any gifts or anything like that.
I'm prepared for a speech, but I have a list.
Mayor, we would be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, so at this time, council, is there any discussion, our questions, now, stop off to my right with the council member in large, finish one.
I only have a statement to make, is I appreciate you guys working with our city attorney and their legal staff that really have been working hard before I came into office, and I believed in you and it paid off, and thank you for y'all's hard work.
Welcome. I wanted to second those sentiments there, you know, from the outside looking in, before I got all the information, I'll be honest, and I was one of those that was thinking, hey, maybe we should just settle, it's just, it's just, it's the easiest thing to do, but once we got every, all the info and got the facts, there was just no way that the city was gonna be able to do something with the Odessa American for this, on this trial. I mean, we did nothing, like, as it was, as it was shown and proven, we did nothing wrong, we complied with the Texas Public Information Act, and so I just really wanna thank y'all and our city attorneys for helping out with this and for your job well done, thank you very much.
So also, I'll just echo that same remark, I'm just very pleased because I really thought we were barking up the wrong tree, and as it turned out, it was the right move, and so maybe now we'll get that blue box off the front page of the newspaper, and, and we can move on with the city's business, and, and then the, maybe the OA won't cost the citizens of Odessa any more money, which they cost us quite a bit, but I'm proud of our, of our staff, Tosh has done a great job, so thank all of y'all very, very much, and Knight Minister Brock, of course, as well, he's not here. Councilman Lewis?
Thank you. You know, anything that I have to say really is just to echo what Denise and Mark and Steve have already said, I don't know if it was unfortunate, but we, we got in on the beginning of this, as far as when the complaint, the suit was first, you know, first filed, and I just wanna say, we believed in our legal team with Natasha Brooks and her team, we believed in what, that what they had done was correct and fair, and it was fair to the citizens of Odessa and protective to the citizens of Odessa, and I just wanna thank you, said we believed in you from the front, from the first, and, and stuck by you through this.
Thank you. Captain Lewis, false.
So councilwoman Willis and I'll get to pile on, but from the very beginning, the three of us were on the council when this all happened, and, and from the very beginning, it just looked like a frivolous lawsuit, that's what it was, and, and, you know, the OA has to sell newspapers, and that was what they were doing, and, and, you know, from that respect, there was no way for us to just settle with them or have any kind of settlement in store, so I am very proud of our staff, what they've done, proud of you guys for hanging with us, and I am so sorry for the money it has cost the citizens.
Councilman Lewis?
There's not a lot left to be said, since it's come all the way around, but I would echo what Tom said, you know, we were there in the beginning, we took some pretty hard knocks as a team, the council that was there, our legal team, we took some pretty hard knocks for simply telling the truth and for standing for what we knew as fact. We stood there against, sometimes it felt against all odds, but we knew and we were assured by Ms. Brooks and her team that we were on the right track, you know, and that the city of Odessa had nothing to hide, we had nothing to keep away from the citizens, we were not trying to spend money unwisely, because we are the stewards of the city's money, and we at all times try to do what is right, I'm a citizen, so I want done what's right with my money as a citizen, and so we believe that's the right thing to do, we never doubted your team Natasha, and I thank you guys for your perseverance, I wanna thank you all, because you came in and made it real clear to us that we were on the right track, you didn't back away, and number one, you supported us as a city, and you did your job, you know, and we won. It's not something that I would gloat in, because we want what's good for the great city of Odessa, and so it's a victory, and it's a hard fought victory, but we don't gloat in it, we just want the citizens to know that we were elected to do a good job for the citizens, and that's what we plan to do, and that's what we've been doing all along. So again, thank you guys, Ms. Brooks and your staff, thank you, and thank you to the council who stood together and believed in doing the right things for the organization, the city of Odessa organization, and for the city of Odessa.
I do have a few little questions, I wanna be, so some clarification. Item four, plaintiff has received all public information entitled to, to under the act. John, can you explain to me, under this act, all information, what is, what is basic information and immediate information under this act, does that exist? Can you, can you give us a definition of what that is, or, because I'm having a hard time understanding what basic information and immediate information, understanding and training that I have received in public information, and the constant question that I have gone throughout the state with other officials and all the lawyers in understanding what public information is, I have yet to see this definition of what is basic and, and immediate, and this is one of the causes of what we, the city of Odessa and the taxpayers were sued for, so could you give us a brief, real, real quickly on that?
Mayor, under the Texas Public Information Act, public information is a very, very broad definition, and it basically includes all documents in possession or control of the city, however, there's no other definition of public information, there's one definition in the act. And the act, in our opinion, says that public information must be produced promptly, and you take into consideration the facts and circumstances of the case. Obviously, there'll be some times where the information can be reduced, uh, be produced very quickly, there'll be other times where it can't be produced very quickly, because let's take just the police department, they have to go through those documents, make sure there's no victims of sexual assault, to make sure that there's no juveniles mentioned, to make sure there's no driver's license, social security, all those fact, all those issues cannot be released, and you just have to go through the records, it takes a while, and especially with their volumines. But to go back to answer your question, there's one definition of public information, and it's very broad, and it basically says, all information in possession or control of the municipality. Now, there's exceptions to the release, which I just listed a few, but there's a lot, and so that's what, that's what you have to do, and the, in our opinion, the Texas Attorney General has been very clear, you have to release the information promptly, depending on the facts and circumstances of each case, it's just not a one size fits all, and so that's what, that's what I think the law is.
On item six, the defendant has complied, has complied with all the Texas Attorney General opinions, orders, and decisions pertaining to all information documented by, by plaintiff, what would cause information that's being requested to the city of Odessa that would cause the, for us to send any information to be looked and viewed by the Attorney General, and then they would render an opinion of what could be released and what could not be released?
Sure, a lot of the information requested from the public, very sensitive, deals with crime, deals with ambush runs, deals with fire runs, deals with all kind of issues, juveniles, family members, police officers' addresses, police officers' spouses, children, and so you wanna make sure that you have a duty, you have a duty to produce the information promptly, because you have a duty to protect the citizens of Odessa and their privacy. I mean, you, when they call and they report a crime, and it's maybe a sexual assault, or, you, you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna release that, you don't wanna make a mistake and get in a hurry and release that, if it involves a juvenile, you don't wanna do that, if it involves social security numbers, driver's license numbers, you don't wanna do that either. And so, yeah, you have to, you have to submit a lot of requests to the Texas Attorney General on all that information, because it's sensitive, it's highly sensitive.
Okay, is there anything in Texas law or in public information that would deem this, this, this process for the city of Odessa or our legal team to send anything to the AG office for review that would be deemed excessive or unnecessary? Is there anything that, if it's a, or, is there a, anything in, in, as far as case law, that would basically say that this practice is over excessive and unnecessary?
Mayor, I, after a thorough review of this case, going over it, over and over and over, I don't think there's any conclusion but one, and that conclusion is that the city of Odessa, in my opinion, complied with the Texas Public Information Act, complied with rulings from the Texas Attorney General, and made requests to the attorney, Texas Attorney General when appropriate. Now, those are the three issues that, that the legislature has, has talked about, and one, did they get the information, obviously yes, two, did you give them the information that the Texas Attorney General told them, obviously yes, and did you request Attorney General's opinion when appropriate, obviously yes. So, you know, it's all, and that's why I wanted to go with the stipulations, just because let's just, let's just keep in mind what the court, what was stipulating to, what was, how it was tried, you know, there's all kind of hypotheticals, but when you, I believe if you look at, number seven, it says the defendant has requested an opinion, order, or decision from the Texas Attorney General regarding the request for information made by the plaintiff. Defendant has not refused to request a Texas Attorney General opinion on any information requested by plaintiff. That, to me, is very clear.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
John, thank you very much for your hard-
Mayor, I would just like to say one thing, I think you and the council could be commended today, because you could have gone into executive session, and you could have talked about all of this in executive session, but you decided to open it up and let the public hear, and I guess if the public has any questions, but I think that's, it's very commendable, because you could have gone into executive session.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, thank you for that presentation.
And quickly, I would like to, because I have a, a lot of staff that helps me, and I would like to recognize our legal team, they work hard every day, we are still processing open records requests daily and complying with the act, so I do wanna recognize the legal team, and a lot of them are here today, and, and they did an excellent job, there was a lot of gathering of information that we had to do, we met with the attorneys often, and so I, I wanna make sure to recognize them, and I appreciate your hard work and commitment.
You wanna recognize it individually, or you wanna introduce it?
You guys wanna stand?
You don't wanna paint a, paint a target on me?
Good job.
I wanna add to, with, with this council, and what they have gone through, and what they have stood through, but also the legal staff and the entire structure of the city, all the employees, but mostly the taxpayers. It is true that we could have actually gone into executive session and spoken, but the thing is, this, this basically goes out to the transparency, the accountability of this council, and your city government that's in work, that's in, this is, you're seeing the broad spectrum of how government works. When I, when I, when I filed and ran, I was of a difference of opinion for the reason is that a news media source, regardless of what that format is, whether it's print, whether it's radio, or whether it's TV, just like the elected officials in every employee of this city or any municipality or any government agency, we are entrusted with public trust. The Odessa American has that responsibility. As I read their story after and after as a citizen, I truly believe that the city of Odessa was in violation, based on what I read. My interview by the Odessa American, I was posed by that question, and I answered it, if there's someone in the city that is not releasing that information, they should be held accountable, I asked for that, that name, and I was never given to them. In being elected, and then being fully briefed, and hearing the members of the council of what they believe and why they believed in the evidence that was put in front of us, it clearly changed, I know my mind. And so we stood behind the expertise of our city attorney, and the legal staff, and the extensive work that they did, in spite of doubt and criticism, we, the staff in the city and this council has been very transparent, we hired attorneys that knew the law inside and out, and, and could basically say they're experts. We've been transparent in what it has cost the citizens, and I want to state this for the record, is that we did not incur, we, the city of Odessa and the taxpayers, you, the citizens, were sued, and thus we had to defend it, for the reason is that we have to stand by the law of what public information is. Clearly, the court has spoken very clearly on nineteen stipulations, you heard the presentation of that the city of Odessa or legal team complied with every request, and soon doing so, we have been very transparent with the cost, and I challenge also the media to also be transparent of what it cost them to sue you. We, that's public information, and, and I've asked a, a legal staff to itemize it, for the reason is that there was, there was cost incurred of a previous legal team, we went in-house, and then we went out-house, and there was, and there was a reason why, the reason why is because we needed to have the best people and the best minds to be able to defend you and to protect, and to make sure the integrity of information and the law was being adhered to. So I want to personally congratulate Ms. Brooks and each member of this legal team for the count of hours that you endured, that you put forward, this city and these citizens, we owe a debt of gratitude, thank you very much for what you did, and, and you know I don't do a lot of pat on the back, but you did an excellent job, and I myself wanna be able to stand up and give you a round of applause, thank you very much. Counsel, is there any other questions or any more comments you would like to be able to add to this? Ms. Brooks, anything else?
No, no, I, I think we could, if, mayor, if it's your pleasure, if you wanted to take any questions from-
Yeah, I was gonna do that, thank you very much. You know, we put this on the agenda, and, and for this work session, is that if there's anyone from the public that wants to come forward and speak on this item, can do so by coming forward and stating your name for the record, and, and you have three minutes to be able to present any, any type of commentary, narrative you wish, and opinion regards to this, this item on this work session. I'll do, I'll open it right now to the public. Seeing that nobody rushed the podium, and wanting to do that, I will go ahead and close in, and move forward, once in, I'll ask council if any other last comments or discussion.
I have one more comment, you said, and you're correct, that at first we had an outside counsel, then we went in-house, then we had an out-house, so. Well, Keith and Mary don't know where you are.
Hey, you can't live with those out-houses.
I can always, I can always, you know- I can always, I can always, uh, uh, you know, you know, council member spoke, and I think we're going to go ahead and move on to another item. So now, last discussions, we are going to move on to the next item. Will be item, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're off the clock. Moving on to item number two, discuss, uh, discovery, discovery of that support. I'm sorry.
Item number one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm sorry, brother. Item number one of Odessa College Downtown Project update, Dr. Greg Williams. Greg Williams, I'm sorry I bumped you and then I forgot about you.
That hurts, man. That hurts. I know, it hurts. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here, Mr. Mayor, council members, support team. Ms. Brooks, you all are, you all are on it. That's wonderful. I know Julius is proud, and, and I am proud of him. And City Manager, Mr. Marrero, thank you for having me today. You told me I'd be right up at three o'clock. No, you didn't. No, you didn't. You, 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 you told me to come and to make a presentation, and I am excited to be here. Uh, thank you all for being our partners in this effort to make Odessa better, downtown, more beautiful, more effective, more inviting to our community. Uh, thank you for your work and, and for your understanding and patience with us because we're excited. The work has, has started, and we're going to share some of that with you today. Uh, we will start with Mr. Zardman, who will share with you some of the information that we've, we've done and some of the work that's been done by our architects. And, and then we, you will, you will hear some of that information, and then we'll come back and close it with, with more information after the update. But again, thank you for having us today.
Mayor, counsel, thank you all again. This is, uh, this is exciting, and I feel like we're finally almost to the point of making this really become a reality. We have some of the latest renderings that we want to show you as this project continues to evolve and adapt. I think it's something that you could be really, really proud of. We invited a JSA who's leading, our leading architect firm on this design to go over it a little bit more detail with you as well. But I hope that you all are excited as we are as you see some of these latest renderings. So the first thing that probably pops off is the blue. Uh, this is a conceptual design as we're playing with colors, OC blue and the excitement that's around that. Uh, but this is some of the most up-to-date concept designs that we have, and I'll invite Jay from, to come up and speak to you about the project. The foundation is still the same. All of the, all of the items that we've wanted from the beginning are still the same. The splash pad is still there, the performance canopies are still there. Uh, but everything's just becoming more and more developed at this point, so Jay.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, counsel. Just a brief overview before we're on the project. We are currently working with our consultants to finish the construction documents. We're about seventy-five percent complete on the construction documents. We have brought on a fountain consultant. We also have a A/B consultant for the performance lighting, for the performance canopy. It's part of the project. Uh, and we are just working to complete those documents, finish them up, and get, get them ready to go out to bid. So that's where we are on the project right now.
There's one more slide. And this just gives you another overall view look of the project when you're looking from above. Um, as you can see, some of the corners are more developed there with Odessa College logo on you. There's another photo as you're kind of walking down the paper, uh, walkway of what it would look like. And, and number two is the beautiful splash pad that I, I think our citizens and the community are really, really going to enjoy as we're putting out performances and all sorts of different events. So the project is coming alive. They, we are about seventy-five to eighty percent complete with those construction documents. So I'm thinking within the next four to six weeks, we will really move forward to what those next steps are, and hopefully within the next couple of months, really have another update to really show to you all. One of the things that we also wanted to cover real quick, remember, this is a two-phase approach. Phase one is everything that you've seen in those graphics today. Um, and that, the total of that cost is a little under three point, uh, three million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then phase two, which would be the academic building that we showcased and talked to you about as well, uh, which is a little over twelve million dollars for a total project of fifteen point five million dollars. Uh, so that's kind of as we've, as we built this project and put in everything that we really wanted to be excited about, this is what we're, what we're looking at. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to see those designs and see where we're at and give you a fresh update. And now we're talking about what's next, and I'll invite Dr. Williams back up to speak.
Dr. Williams, before you move on, but I think it would be important for the council to understand a couple of things associated with the project in terms of programming and security associated with the site.
Yes, in, in terms of programming, we are, Odessa College will, will, will be responsible for all of that. Uh, we're going to have a, again, depending on the, the season, uh, we want to have programming happening at, at any time that there's light as much as possible. Uh, we will, uh, reserve some of those spaces for the city of Odessa. Again, as one of our key partners for your programming, for things you want to do in downtown Odessa, we want to join you in that. Uh, we'll invite others, uh, there will be a, a small fee associated with that be- because we'll need ongoing funds to, to keep the project going. Uh, again, as we've talked about, we'll have a fence around the, the property because everyone wants to keep, wants us to create a beautiful space, but we also want to maintain a beautiful space, uh, year two, year five, year twenty. We want it to be beautiful, operational, and, and, and something we all can be proud of. So that, that's, that's our endeavor, uh, and we will make sure that, that we take care of that. We have our own police force at Odessa College. You know, we have, uh, we join you in having the city of Odessa Police Force that will help us as well. We'll have cameras, uh, throughout the facility to, to, to keep it as safe as possible. But we want, we want people in Odessa to feel safe and to want to come out and to want to be a part of this space in downtown Odessa. And then we think it also will be very attractive to other businesses and other entities to come and be a part of this. Once we have the building there, it will be educational and inspirational and operate in a way where we will have businesses within it and will be spaces where we'll teach, uh, future business owners, uh, to expand in their crafts. So, uh, very exciting space.
Well, counsel, I want to thank Dr. Williams and the staff for engaging certainly my office and I think some of the council, all of the council in this process. Uh, part of Dr. Williams' request also is going to be a financial request, and I think he mentioned that the last time he was here. And if the council recalls, last year, we also had a discussion about money that the city has set aside for, um, uh, a project such as this. So I'll, I'll give the council a bit of context, and I think you have a, a request once I make my comments, Dr. Williams. But both the conference center and Rowley's entered into the city with E. official, including a provision, uh, and whereby the city agreed to retain a hundred percent of the hotel motel tax, uh, both the state and local tax that we received by the city um, from the operations of the Marriott Hotel for up to three years. These funds were be, were intended to provide additional funding to official to discharge for any loss arising from the operations of the hotel and conference center for any particular year within that three-year period. If any of the loss from the operations did not exist within a particular year, then those funds were to be used by the city for a downtown revitalization project. We currently are in the final year of the third-year period. Uh, during the first two years, official has foregone asking for those funds to supplement any loss from operations at the hotel and instead have opted that the funds be retained by the city to be utilized for a downtown revitalization project, specifically this project. Uh, Mr. Oph was here last and talked to the council. During the first year of operations, the city retained four hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars uh, of combined state and local hot funds. That was year one. Uh, during year two, the city retained five hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars of combined state and local hot, hot funds from hotel operations, bringing the total combined amount currently available for a downtown revitalization project to one million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. As I mentioned, this is a three-year agreement, and the three-year, year three dollars will not be available until September twenty-two of this year. Uh, Dr. Williams, again, I think you, you, you have a request that you wanted to make to the council-
Yes.
On that, just on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, I have been in, um, conversations with Toby Oph, uh, and, uh, and as you know, uh, they opened the, uh, the Marriott at exactly the right time. And then COVID happened, so they, they have lost money over those, the, these first two years. And, uh, so they could, uh, ask you for those funds, and, and I'm sure you would support them. But they, being generous and wanting to support downtown Odessa, uh, they have, um, he, in my conversation with Toby, he is supportive of these funds from the first two years. The, the million and twenty-seven thousand going to Odessa to become a part of this project. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're excited about that. We're thankful for that and appreciative. And, uh, we've come to ask you for your consideration to allow us to utilize those funds for this project.
Of course, counsel, this is not obviously a, a day we would make a decision we wanted to present the information to you, and certainly we have an item prepared for you if you choose to.
Dr. Williams, any other want to add? Counsel, any discussion, questions?
I have one thing I want to say. When I first heard about the blue, changing green to blue, I thought blue. But I was in Tulsa this past weekend, and several of their facilities, like tennis courts at the university, are blue, and they look sharp. They are bright, and I, I like the blue.
Thank you.
Not that that matters a tremendous amount, but I like that blue.
We're, we're still arm wrestling with our architects. I'm sure Jay Bradford wants to come up and choke me as we, as we present the blue, but, uh, we're, we're still debating that. And, and at Odessa College, as you know, the, the, at the new stadium, the field is green, but the, the track will be blue.
Right.
So, uh, that is something that one of our board members had mentioned. So we're, we're certainly considering that. We wanted to get input from, from you about that. And, uh, and we've talked to a number of people, so that is, uh, we, we're, for some reason, we like blue at Odessa College for some reason. But, uh, uh, but we're, again, we're arm, arm wrestling with our architects about that. But thank you.
I, I, I mentioned my, I raised my concerns about the blue.
I, I heard you say something like how much you loved it, so, so at the end, at the end of our conversation. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
If we can't have water, we can't have delusional water.
Thank you.
And that is so.
Notice I didn't say anything.
Uh, on, on, with my, uh, with, uh, City Manager presented as far as with the, uh, the sales standards.
Hotel motel.
Hotel motel, I'm sorry. Uh, one of the things is also, one of the stipulation is that, that any of the revitalization has to occur within a certain distance of the, uh, of the-
It's got to be downtown revitalization, so it's got to be located in downtown.
If anyone, you know, says, hey, why are we giving this around? There is, this is for downtown, and so, uh, you know, so this, this is why this, this project is. And would be a good, good project.
Counsel, any questions?
I haven't, oh, go ahead, sir. I just want to make a comment that, you know, I think it's, uh, again, COVID has honored Oph, continue to support Odessa. This is just one more way that they believe in this city and, and they always put their money where their mouth is. And, uh, the wonderful folks and, uh, people like, uh, them that, uh, make this city go and give us, uh, some real energy, so thank you again. Thank you for OC for coming up with your, with the idea and the project, and, and I think it's, uh, it's very exciting.
Mr. Marrero, when does the year three end?
It'll end September of this year, this month.
What are we on track, on pace to bring in on that?
Uh, if we take an average of what happened the first year and the second year, uh, we would probably be on track to be anywhere between five hundred and fifty thousand to maybe as high as seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Addition. Oh, it's already there.
Yeah, we'll not be available until the end of the fiscal year. And probably a couple of months after that until we get the state's money remitted back to the city.
Thank you.
Any final questions, discussion?
I don't have a question or discussion, but I just, as I said before, Dr. Williams, thank you. You know, it's partnerships with, um, people like Dr. Williams in the Odessa College that makes the city a better place to live, a better place to raise your children. And this is what we should be doing, you know, as a, as a city, wherever we can, um, collaborate and partnership, I believe that's just what we should be doing as a city. It sets the standard, it sets the lead, and, um, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. It's, it's a feel-good thing. It's a good thing for our citizens. Um, I would like to echo what Mr. Thompson said. Um, Mr. Marrero said that the oath, I think that needs to be pointed out. They could have asked for the money because they suffered losses, big losses with the hotel, with the Marriott. And the generosity of their heart to say, you know, we could take the money back and we could do what we need to do with it. But instead, they said, let's, let's make it happen for Odessa because they love Odessa. And so I just wanted to echo, you know, there's, and, and, you know, here I am again, took some hits for that, but it, it all turned out good. I mean, you know, and so I'm proud of, of the downtown. I'm proud of what it's become. I'm proud of the Marriott. I'm proud of this. I'm proud of everybody that helped. But I do thank you and your team, uh, Ms. Marrero. Thank you for working with OC to help, and, and your team and the city of Odessa to help, you know, move this forward. We're not where we need to be, and of course, this is not the time to vote for it, but it is very positive and it's a bright start, I see.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, may I add one more point that will, that's, uh, off topic a bit, but will, should make you all proud. Odessa College, we've, we've broken, um, in spring and fall, or fall and spring, I should say, seven enrollment records in a row.
Congratulations.
And as of this spring, and we're not, we, we do the eight-week courses, so we have students who will start again in about four weeks, and we have more enrollments to come. But at this moment, standing on seven enrollment records in a row, we're up twenty percent this semester. That's ridiculous. That's abnormal. The project, the rest of the state is flat to slightly up some, and some, many are down. But it's associations like this, it's projects like this that keep people excited, keeps our team excited, keeps our city going. There are really good things that are going on in the city of Odessa. I know we hear about some bad things, and, and we have this struggle and that struggle. But thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for partnering with us. There are some great things happening, and we're proud to partner with you.
I'm confident you get through the door, and I know you'll keep them in.
We're, we're doing the best, sir. Thank you. In the fall, we had over eight thousand students. Now we're at, we sit at roughly seventy-two hundred in the spring. We normally go down a bit in, in the spring versus the fall. When I started fifteen years ago, we were at four thousand students. We're now over eight thousand in the fall, so we're still going.
Starting in nineteen sixty-seven, we had only fifteen hundred.
Our goal is ten thousand, right? We, we won't celebrate too much until we get to ten thousand because the city deserves and needs that. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to the next item. Any last discussion? We're going to move on to, uh, item number two, discovery of Odessa support report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council people. We are, I just want to just also say that it's exciting to hear Odessa College and that project because, as you know, we are bringing visitors to the, uh, conference center, and I will speak about that briefly in just a minute, that we just had one here last week. And that revitaliz- revitalization of downtown Odessa is going to be so attractive to those visitors. So that hotel occupancy tax will be spent well, no doubt, so thank you for that partnership. Um, I am giving a quarterly report for December Odessa for October twenty-twenty-one to December twenty-twenty-one. Uh, I, I apologize, I am a month late, so we have had some events that have happened in January, so I'll touch on those a little bit. Uh, the total economic impact for, for October, as you see, was high. It was eight million, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, that was largely due to the Permian Basin International Oil Show. That was the month that that was here. And then in November, you see that it drops to a million, five hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and forty-seven. Uh, and that, a bunch of that was a lot due to sports. And then in December, historically, we are low in December as far as visitors and, and those that we work with. You can see how the room nights are broken up. Again, the meeting events was the largest for hotel nights, uh, eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three hotel nights. And again, that was due to the PPIOS, special events and sporting events. You can see the attendees by each group. Sporting events does tend to have more attendees because of you bringing grandma and grandpa, mom, dad, and siblings. So, uh, that is why that was the largest, even though that wasn't the biggest portion of the events that we hosted. Um, total groups assisted in this quarter were thirty-three different groups. Total groups assisted in this quarter were thirty-three different groups. We had fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two total attendees that were accounted for, and the total room nights were eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven room nights. You can see down at the bottom, the hotel information, we do have fifty-three properties in Odessa with four thousand, six hundred and sixteen hotel rooms. On the second page, you'll see that the groups at the top, those are all of the groups that we assisted in that quarter. The Permian Basin International Oil Show did bring in seven million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. There were sixteen thousand attendees for the PBIOS and a room block of eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three rooms. That was down. I did get a chance to talk to Tony Frye, the director for PBIOS, and a large part of that was because of COVID. That's when the new variant was, was ramping up, and a lot of oil show, or I'm sorry, oil companies did not send their, their groups because of that. So that's what he attributed that to. And then we had the Odessa Jackalope Chief League, that was in November, and that's always a great tournament that does come here, and that brings in quite a bit of rooms in November. As well as this year, Odessa College hosted the NJCAA National Basketball Invitational Classic. So that was another significant amount of rooms during the month of November. As far as upcoming, and I, I do want to touch on a few in, in January that have happened. The Crowd Pleasers Dance Show, that again was a brand-new event generated by Teresa Vazquez, who brought in a dance group from Houston. It was, they've never been on this side of thirty-five, it was successful, they had a lot of great feedback. There were a hundred and seventy-two nights out of that, but again, because they were so pleased, they did host it, the Downtown Marriott. They were so pleased with their accommodations that they are looking to come back again next year. So I, I do commend Teresa for bringing a brand-new event. The Samuel Scott Show Rodeo had two sold-out nights, had twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four attendees, and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three room nights from that. Mr. Jim Wise, who is the director for the, for the rodeo, did mention that this was one of the most successful ones that they've had in several years. And then I, what I want to talk about is the TACDB Winter Education Conference. That's the event that we just had here last week. That event is for the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau. Amanda Johnson is the, our group sales specialist, is the one that bid for that project, and we won against two other cities. That, that organization are our peers across the state, so those are other CDBs. I want you to know that's intimidating somewhat, because they are the most critical group. They know what it means to sell your destination, what it is to market, and to look around at what we have. I cannot tell you how many compliments this city received on our, on the conference center, on the hotel, and then things that are out of our control, like the food and the hotel service and the accommodations. Those people from across the state left this city with very impressed and with a whole new appreciation for Odessa. And that is great for us, because these are people that talk to meeting planners all across the state. And if they can't get an organization, we're hoping that they will say, go to Odessa, because they've got some great things to offer. And the thing that's exciting about Odessa College revitalizing is that was one of the few complaints, if you will, is that we needed more things downtown for them to walk to, to go eat, or to go shop, or to go drink. You know, that's what they want. So to hear all of these things that are coming up is, is exciting for us, and that's going to be our job, is to help promote and, and just, you know, bring awareness to that for different visitors that will be here. But as you can see in those upcoming events, we do have quite a big of a list there, and we're excited. There's several of them that are brand-new conferences that will be coming. Some of the activities that our staff is involved with, is we do service our different groups as far as putting together the bags of, you know, promo giveaways or literature of where to go eat and shop. We did have IDSS training, which is the database that we use to implement or to put in all the information that goes with each group that we work with. Sales calls was two hundred and ninety-eight, we have our monthly newsletter, and then we had our meeting planning celebration, too. And that's when we take the opportunity to identify all of those groups that the sales team work with, and they bring in the meeting planners, and we give them a gift and just tell them thank you. And then last but not least, on the third page is our marketing report, and I wanted to say real quick, we have hired a new marketing and communication specialist for Discover Odessa. Her name is Ashley Flores, Ashley Field Wave. She is, she just started with us in November, she comes to us, she's an Odessa native. She comes to us from the Illinois Art Museum. She has already, in these two and a half months that she's been with us, has increased so many of our social media likes, and she just has more of a presence there, and again, more awareness for Odessa. She's done a great job. But you can see in this marketing report, you know, we give our website visits, Google Analytics as to how many times Odessa's been searched, and the kiosk that we have there at the conference center, you see the establishments, we've had eight hundred and ninety-two. A lot of people are, of course, wanting to know what the local attractions are and places to eat. We spent forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents in marketing in this quarter. And you can see that we've had some active billboards in Lubbock and Abilene, and then the one-on-eighth in Grandview. And we continue to promote our trails, which is for the Jack Rabbit Trail and the Queso and Margarita Trail. So we try to get locals and visitors to go and discover the thirty-two Jack Rabbits that we have around town, or to go have a Queso and Margarita, so. Anyway, it's just something fun for us to promote with our visitors as well as locals. Are there any questions for Discover Odessa, for our staff?
Council, questions, comments?
Oh, no.
Sure.
We do appreciate you all so much, we really do. And I, I do, I want to recognize my, my staff, because last week was literally working from seven-thirty until ten o'clock, because there's just so much that goes into that event. And Amanda took, took that, and she just ran with it and organized it, and we all followed her lead, and she did a phenomenal job, they all did. So I want, I want to give them a lot of recognition for the hard work that they do. Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number three, Consider Resolutional Support for an Application to Tax Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Bill Fisher.
Hey, I may. Mayor and Council, the item that we'll discuss with you this afternoon is in fact an application to Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, for what's called a nine percent, nine percent competitive tax, low-income housing tax credit. This will be for the apartment complex located at twenty-five fifty West Eighth, the Woodcrest Apartments. If you recall, last year, the council provided a resolution to support for the project. The developer submitted the application, the TBHCA, and whether the application was not ultimately funded. Developer Rise Residential is going to join us today to talk not only about last year's application, but to visit with you about the current year's application. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for your time today. And I thank you so much for your resolution of support last year. We have no opportunity to bring funding to Woodcrest without your support. And we appreciate you taking your time to hear us today. The reason we were not successful last year was, you know, primarily a result of a state agency issue. We are funded under a federal income tax program. Although it relates to housing, it isn't a HUD program, it's a Ronald Reagan Federal Income Tax Program that was originally sponsored in nineteen eighty-six. It's one of the most successful public-private partnership programs in, in the last fifty years. One of the requirements for the state of Texas is to allocate a minimum percentage of the funding that they receive to rural transactions. And through, through several mistakes at the agency, they failed to allocate all of the necessary funding to the rural set aside. It's fundamental to the state's ability to access the housing tax credit program for the state. So what the agency did was, we compete in the at-risk set aside, and I'll go into that. But the at-risk set aside, a portion of that funds some rural transactions associated with the USDA program. So in order to fix the issue, to get enough rural transactions to meet their minimum standard, they made a decision to fund USDA transactions well beyond what is typically allowed in the rules. And it was done for a compliance purpose for the state. The two applications, ours and one of others, that were disenfranchised, we understood the rules and understood we were really entitled to the funding. But we are long-term developers of workforce housing. We do a lot of preservation, which is what Woodcrest is. And so it's really, in, in this case, it's really just a matter of waiting another year in order to apply for the funding, which is why we're back this year asking you again for resolutions for it. Woodcrest, for those of you, just to remind you, is a rental subsidized property. So seventy-four of the existing eighty units receive a rental subsidy directly from Washington. It doesn't encroach on any local resources. So Woodcrest serves as a safety net for the disabled, elderly, or families with children that are not able to work. And it provides the funding directly from Washington so that the housing authority or the city doesn't bear the burden of housing these families. The property, as Ms. Wells knows, has been there for fifty years, and we have the opportunity, working together, to demolish and reconstruct the property brand-new. As you might imagine, the property is functionally obsolete. It doesn't offer water efficiency to the residents, it's not energy efficient. Obviously, it's a very old design, which affects our neighborhood. And so it was good that we were hearing talk of revitalization, because one of the important things that we're trying to do here is provide community revitalization. Redeveloping the property will not displace any person. We will replace it with eighty units, brand-new, energy-efficient, water-efficient, and in a design and code-compliant manner that the city will, will approve in the future, right? We'll have to come in for a permit for new construction, so we'll have to meet all the new code requirements, make sure the fire marshal's happy with it, and install some life safety features that frankly are not there. Spring pliers, connected fire alarm system, that kind of thing. One of the benefits we get from the redevelopment, our rental assistance ends at a year. Now, we could renew it probably a year at a time, so long as the property meets some minimum standards, but that will end at some point. So one of the benefits we'll get from demolishing and reconstructing it, HUD will extend the rental assistance for twenty years. So you've taken a community safety net and extended it its life for twenty years without using community resources, and at the same time, achieved some community revitalization. We've obviously done good things for our, our families and our seniors that live there. It certainly will be accessible and some other things that it's been hard to deal with the current configuration. We do collaborate with the residents, we do meet with them. We provide the notice of what we're applying for. There is another meeting with the residents here a week from tomorrow, to update them on the application. It really hasn't changed from last year, but we do take input from them, and we do ask for their support, which they gave last year as well. So we're here today asking you to provide a resolution of support. It includes the only local contribution you're asked to do, which is five hundred dollars in a fee waiver as for a portion of our building permit fees. It's a point-scoring item that makes our application competitive. At this point, if we're successful, it will provide approximately fifteen million dollars to redevelop the property, and it will extend the rental assistance, as I mentioned, for twenty years, which is at a minimum at least an additional ten million dollars over a twenty-year period of rental assistance for the safety net for the families in Odessa. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we would certainly hope that you would consider supporting us again this year.
Council, any questions, comments? Councilman Willis?
That is in District Five. I would just like for you to point out, last time, when you say demolish and rebuild, the first thought in some minds is, where do the people go? So I would just like you to briefly point out that you do provide a place for the, this place, while the construction is taking place, they won't put out, they won't, you know, they won't come on home.
And we help them find the housing, we pay for their moves and utility reconnection. The rental assistance that they currently enjoy passes through to their new location, and then they're guaranteed by federal law the right to return to the property to their unit or this style of unit that they had before. And this is all protected not only by state law, but by federal law as well. To give you an idea, Rise is one of the largest developers of affordable housing in the U.S. They've been in business for more than twenty years, they've undertaken many of these transactions. They have a very good relationship with HUD as well as the state agency because of their efforts to preserve this type of housing. This has began with a federal program more than thirty years ago, it ended thirty years ago. So the only thing available now for these properties is to revitalize them and extend the rental assistance. If that doesn't happen, the rental assistance goes away forever, because it cannot be renewed.
When would you expect the start of the project?
If we are funded in July, well, no, on July thirty-first, we would close our financing in October, subject to having building permits, but it will, there'll be about a, a three- or four-month lead time, because we do need to assist our residents to move and, and get new housing. So I would think toward the end of this year or early next year, construction will begin.
Mr. Fisher, as part of the tenant relocation, you would be following the Federal Tenant Relocation Act that would require that you provide not only the assistance for the project, but also the moving of items and personalized furniture and stuff.
Everything, we, we pay for the mover, we provide all packing materials for the disabled that aren't able to pack, we provide pack. There's a full-time, a person who manages the relocation process so that they always have someone to reach out to, even after they've moved off the property, walls being redone, just to keep them up to date, answer questions or concerns.
And the unit that they would be relocated to would be comparable or better than the unit they're in today?
Absolutely.
Question, so the last time you made a presentation, I think it's been, one, twelve months ago, correct?
It was, it was twelve months ago. We, we did a Zoom call twelve months ago in February, about this time.
There was, after that, I might have gained some, some calls and some concerns. I know Councilmember Spock, they called me, and, and he was approached by, uh, uh, community members, concerns, but, yeah. One of them was about jurisdiction, uh, it's been, it's been a while. And so, do you recall any that were discussed as far as?
Well, the question is, who are you, who are you partnering with as far as the housing authority to do this?
Well, we, well, we don't require a partner, we've offered a partnership to the Housing Finance Board, and we have reached out to the housing authority about possibly partnering in the transaction, should they choose to do it. It would just be a matter of choice for that.
And so the, the contractor and the builder, they would come out of the local area, or are they traveling from other areas? You already have a builder, builder and the construction company?
Rise is, Rise is the contractor, and we are here, we're, we own the property. We developed a new property in Midland, and we manage about six hundred units here in Odessa. We manage the Woodlands apartment and the Pepper Tree Apartments for third-party investors who would invest in Odessa as part of a revitalization of those properties.
The engineering's already done on this project, if I understood your timeline?
We, we do, we've got, we have, you know, again, this is a redo, so we, we have an engineering feasibility study. We know where all the, everything goes, we have basic plans for the engineering. It will take a couple of months of detailed civil engineering drawings to get to the point we have a permit, but we certainly know a lot about the property at this point.
Good manager, if that please apply.
Hi, Mr. Williams.
So they'll, so they'll have to work that into their, something like that.
So we'll have to review.
Yes, sir, whenever they submit their, their information, we will at that time, based on a number of units, its location, its sector, if you will, we'll know what impact these will be applicable to this project.
Yeah, your only contribution is the five hundred dollars, and we'll bring all the other money to the table.
Council, any other questions, comments?
You said you'd have one meeting with the residents already, what was the turnout? Did you have quite a few to?
Pretty light.
Pretty light.
So because it was just an update to let them know that we intended to apply, what I would call the big meeting is a week from tomorrow. We also didn't want to get our residents riled up if for some reason, because we do respect the councils, right, to say no. So to the extent that you all were not willing to be supported, we would not have any chance to be successful. And, and it does raise concerns among residents regarding relocation. So, so they're aware of it, we've given everybody written notice, and there is a meeting on the property on the twenty, twenty-third.
On, on the twenty-third?
At twelve-thirty, that's right. And the resident has the opportunity to attend on the site, now that we can all get together. But there's also a conference dial and number, so they don't actually have to be there if they choose not to.
Any final questions, discussion? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable, for hearing us.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item four, Consider Award a Bit for Twenty-Twenty-Two Civil Project Report.
Welcome, Mayor, there, Council.
Welcome, Mayor, there, council. Decided to consider award of bid for two thousand twenty-two Silco. The bids for this project were opened on February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and three responsive bids were submitted for this project. Lowest responsive bidder was Ronald Wagner from Kim Valley, Texas, in the amount of one million seven hundred seventy thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. The bid was eleven percent less than engineer's estimate, and our estimate for the project was approximately two million dollars. The purpose of this project is to seal code approximately six hundred seventy-five thousand square yards of major and minor arterial streets, which is approximately sixteen point five green and white. And the funds are available in the Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure Comp. And I'll be happy to answer for questions.
Council, any questions, comments? I have to put your request in for your road.
Are we already redoing University?
No, it is part, it is part of the CSU.
It's part of the what?
No, this is...
Not the west side of University?
A portion of the west side.
A portion of the west side?
Yeah, a portion of the west side from, 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 from.
Oh, we didn't go that far west?
We didn't go that far.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is part of the new one.
Yeah, it's an extension of what we already know.
Okay, so it's like that little portion of University, and then is that Golders? It's being, like in Lot Twenty-One. Oh, yeah, it's Golders. Ooh, they need it. Very good.
Can you go up to, can you go up to the top right? I'm trying to check it so I can read it.
About seven?
Yeah, seven, eight.
What is that road right there? What is that?
Fifty-second and John Denver.
What is it? There we go.
Yeah, so, I'm just trying to see what that road is from the red dot on the south, on section seven there?
Section seven is Fifty-second Street.
That's Fifty-second?
Yes.
Okay. There's one ninety-one. And the red dot crossing one ninety-one is Fodger? No, it wouldn't be Fodger.
Yes, Billy Hacks.
Billy Hacks, yeah, okay, good. That's what I thought. I'm sure there's Fodger's over here.
And Billy Hacks is being rededged?
Yeah, Billy Hacks, it's a, it's a, all the way down.
And is that East Ridge on the box seventeen sixty?
No, that's, that's here.
East Ridge, yeah. They've been all, they've been all still coming over there.
So we're doing the extension to University to East in box twenty-four nineteen? Yeah. The ratio of surface code?
Surface code?
That's mid.
And then Oakwood. Can you go there? Can you go back to the top right again, towards Fodger Road? You did, yeah. So, from Fodger, okay. So Fifty-sixth Street goes from nine through eight, right? Yeah, it's Combe School there.
Yes.
So that's, that's not in the radar at all?
It needs to be reconstructed. As I said, we have one working on the design, right? So there'll be a full reconstruction.
So that's going to be a full reconstruction?
And that doesn't have to be, that's nothing, right?
No, it's not basically, was it counted that came through? Yeah, it's just, but it's just awful to get so much traffic. That's why I was wondering if, because I've asked the city manager several times where the money's going to come from to pave that road.
Well, we use twenty million.
Twenty million, I know. So I just tried to figure out, you know, if we're going to try to pass it in the meantime, we're going to just wait. So I guess we're... Throw away, okay. Just curious.
Any other questions, council? Directions? Or any, anyone, you want to add? Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item five.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes?
Item nine, I know that there's some guests here that...
Do you want to go ahead and move that up? Yeah. Okay, go ahead and move to item nine, discussion on Gertrude Bruce Building, Mr. Marrero. Do you have a pro?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. In a minute, sir. Last year, I received a call from Ms. Joanne Devonport-Littleton asking for a meeting at Woodson Park, specifically to look at the Gertrude Bruce Center and the condition of the center. That discussion led to a little conversation with councilmembers Matha and Willis and the city attorney to discuss the current state of the property as well as what the city may want to do moving forward. In a moment, I'll have Mr. Anderson show some photos of the property so you can get a sense for its current condition. From the photos, you'll see that the property has fallen into disrepair. Additionally, after the winter storm last year, I was contacted by Mr. Collins, who indicated the property had experienced damage as a result of a ruptured water line in the property. And again, you'll see, you'll see the pictures. The damage is pretty extensive. Mr. Anderson and his folks have been looking at what the potential cost might be to repair that building, but we'll let Scott come up to present that here in a minute. To our knowledge, there was not an insurance claim filed on the property. The property is leased to the Gertrude Bruce Historical Cultural Center Association. On September twenty-ninth of last year, the city attorney's office sent a letter to Ms. Collins informing them of the potential breach of contract with the city relating to the lack of maintenance on the property, and provided thirty days in which to remedy the problem. That did not occur, so therefore, November first of last year, the city attorney's office sent a notice terminating the lease agreement with the association. At this point, I'd like Mr. Anderson to come up and share some of the photos associated with the property.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Taking through a virtual run-through of the facility as it sits today. Like Mr. Marrero had said, they did have water damage in the winter storm last year. I was called out about three weeks after that storm to assess the building, and it's pretty much in the same condition it was the first time out there. So we'll just walk you through it. Naturally, this is the kitchen area. Really no damage in the kitchen area. Where we start getting into the damage is in the main hallway. So we had wooden plank floor, which, as you can see, buckled up pretty bad once the water, the water ran through the building and out the north end of the building. So this was some of the areas that I looked at. Naturally, the top layer floor is trashed. The sub-layer is plywood sheet. So we'll go in here to the restroom area. This is where we had the damage to the water line and all the leak came from. So I have had three contractors come out and look at this, and they've given me some estimates. And these are, these are rough estimates. But for the mold remediation, I'm looking at thirty thousand dollars to remediate all the mold. That'll be pulling up the floor, the subfloor, coming in and sanding all the floors, if you will, the top, bottom sides, and then treating the soil. So I have had some estimates to put the facility back into use of seventy thousand dollars.
About a hundred grand?
So we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars. That's what my estimate is at this time. And, you know, it depends. We'll have to build the specs of what we want to come back with, whether we want to come back with hardwood flooring or if we want to come back with laminate flooring or tile or, you know, these are decisions we'll have to make in the future.
Is designated a historical facility? Do we use, do we have to buy back with historical society?
That's something I'm still checking on to make sure that if we, if we do need to follow those guidelines, that we do follow those guidelines.
There's a potential to have a meeting with that group since nineteen ninety-seven?
That's why I've been asking for that.
You can give them that. But I'll answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Matha, this is in your district. You want to be able to ask me a question?
Yes, I was, when Mr. Marrero brought me on this with Councilwoman Willis, it was, it was nice to, it was nice to hear that the Black Culture Council wants to take this over because, I mean, this, I got to learn a lot of the history of Gertrude Bruce. She was the, she was an educator, and she was the first black librarian in Natchitoches County. And with the history that the Black Culture Council has, with putting on the Juneteenth celebrations and the hours they have in the South Side, I think this would be a great project for them. I think this is, they have a heart, they have a passion for it. The plans that they've discussed with me about this is something that I think can be a very, very positive, have a very positive impact in the South Side. They have, they're wanting to go in and not just have this just a building for them to see that have a building. Yeah, I don't actually want to go in. Have this open certain, certain days of the week for tours, for elementary schools to come in here, make it more of a tourist center, so we can have that education for people that don't know about Gertrude Bruce and the area there. So I got on this and been meeting with Ms. Littleton for quite a few times, trying to get, trying to get to the bottom of this. And with the help of our legal department, we have made some steps. So I've asked Ms. Devonport-Littleton to come up with the Black Culture Council to, they're going to do a presentation on what they would like to do with the building, and...
And I did share with her some pamphlet that I found this morning from the grand opening of the facility in nineteen...
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven, yeah, allegedly I was there.
Scott, hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know roughly how many square foot is in that building?
Yes, ma'am. Roughly fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, so would you guess?
The area that's damaged that we would need to, to repair is about a little over a thousand square feet.
And that, would you guess a thousand of it is in the, what would be the meeting area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's a thousand and seventy-two square feet. So it's about a twelve-hundred square foot facility.
Did you read the whole thing, right?
I probably wouldn't go into the kitchen area because the kitchen area was fine, but the rest of the flooring.
The flooring in the main hall?
Main hall. And then the flooring in the hallway, and then the flooring in the bathrooms, both bathrooms.
Tungy Gru?
It's Tungy Gru right now, yes.
I was going to say, it's Tungy Gru now.
Yeah.
You could, and that's what I've been asking about the historical significance.
Yes, sir.
Are we required to go back there? Because that will, that will increase your cost of spending.
Yes, sir.
Also, do you have any idea how that building is designated occupancy-wise? Is it an assembly? Is it, do you have any idea if it's office, or anything along that way?
No, ma'am.
Just thinking ahead.
Okay.
And also, you know, that, along with what Councilmember Matha was saying, you know, about adding it as a tourist, you know, you've got the White Pool House, just that is a part of almost every tour now also, and just continue down that way. It would be so great to bring tourists from the White Pool House through the city on that one street to come over and talk about Ms. Bruce, who was very integral in the, I was born and raised in the South Side, so very integral in the history of the South Side. So I think, you know, just, you've got the Boys Club there, which I think, and Ms. Littleton will go over. You know, there's some, some, what I keep saying is the kiddos, you know, we have some kiddos in our neighborhoods where I grew up. You know, oftentimes, you hear about kids seeing art and going to New York and going here and going to there. Oftentimes, we have not been able to take some of our kids there. This is an opportunity for them to go to New York, for them to go see the wonders, to go see, because that's a place where they could go directly from the Boys Club and go into a whole different world than what they've been able to experience. And I just think where we are in education now, with COVID having backed-off education, you know, shortening our education for some of our kids, it's just an excellent opportunity to have it open, to have it available to kids in a walking distance for, you know, they don't have to get a, right, or raise money to get them so as to go to Washington D.C. to see the monument. We can create that right now, but chill, chill.
Councilmember, I can tell you that when the facility was moved towards the park in the forties, it was used as a recreation center at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This facility, you have a thought?
Thank you. Mayor and council, let me just first say thank you for allowing me the time to come before you. And I want to thank members of our community for being here for support. I would like to make a small presentation, and after my presentation, I would ask Attorney Gavin Norris to come up and have some words, if it's okay with the mayor and council. I've given each of you a presentation. I'm very passionate about this project because this was the third project that I was a part of when I got on council. And it took about four years to completion. So if anyone knows about this project, I do. I was there from the, from the beginning. I presented you with a small packet of information about the center, about who Ms. Bruce is, I mean, who she was, some pictures of the dedication. I think there were some questions. We are a five, one C, three nonprofit organization because we do have a history with the city of, of receiving funds from the city. We do have a board that established, we have bylaws. And why does the community want, or what do we plan to do with the Gertrude Bruce Center? Well, during the organizational meetings in the nineties, about thirteen community people came together because we needed a place where we could come together, have, display our history. At that time, there was, the Woodson Center's there, but it's always occupied. And we had nowhere to go. They have meetings and things. And the city had just built a new Thule Sweetley Daycare Center, which is adjacent to the old one. And there was, there was a lot of conversation about what could we do with it? Well, it's a historical landmark. James Headley had donated that, those army barracks to Thule Sweetley for the daycare. So to tear down Thule Sweetley, though, the daycare, that was not an option. So the community came before the city council, and they received a community block grant funds. That was about almost a four-hundred thousand dollar project to renovate that building the way it is today. It took, I think, three physical years of funding to get that building in the way it was before. It has a rich history, and when we first decided to bring that building together, like I said, meetings, displaying history, that was the purpose of that building. At that time, I didn't ask for the job. The community voted. They elected me to be the president of the Gertrude Bruce Center, and naturally, I took on, I took it on, and I was ready to go. I know there's been some discussion as to what happened to me, you know, why I fell by the wayside. Well, if that was going to be a thriving staple in our community, we had to become legal. We had to have fundraisers, and we were going to have to go out into the community and ask for community help. Well, that board at the time, and myself, we were not on the same page at all because my, my idea was becoming nonprofits, getting nonprofit status. Let's ask major corporations for donations to keep the building up. And unfortunately, my board, they wanted to have garage sales and teas and... And I, I just, that was not what I had envisioned for that facility. So I just stepped back. It hurt me, but I did. I stepped back from, because we didn't have the same vision. As time went on, the board changed hands, and different people became involved in the board, and I was just on the outside, just watching, monitoring everything that was going on. Many of the original board members have died. And I think maybe, well, I think I may be, I, I may be the only surviving one. Because most, often, they're, they're deceased. When, um, I was notified that, you know, I've always, the people have always called me to say they want to rent the facility, they don't know who to contact, and I said, I'll do my best to help. I was notified that there was water running out of the building when the, the pipe burst. I immediately called the people, whoever needed to be called and said, there's water running out of the building. I literally drove by the building every day to watch the, the building to see what happened. It was almost, almost a year and the building just sat there, nothing. And I wanted to approach the council, but I said, no, you know. I approached individuals on our board, we wanted to be, you know, we wanted to obtain the building. But we're about community building, we don't want division in our community. And if that meant BCCO trying to take that building, we'd better rather walk away. So, we have said idle, but enough is enough. That building just could not sit there. Weeds, that's, that's on a major thoroughfare in our community. Weeds growing a knee-high, a waist-high, the sheet rock at the back door, it was just terrible. That's when I said, we would like to be the source of that building. Of course, I was met with opposition. And when I was met with opposition, we started looking at the legal aspects of it. And I've been knowing, my name was still, from nineteen ninety-five, my name was still on the contract. I was just as surprised as everyone else because I know the feelings between that board and myself were, we didn't leave on good terms. So, I just knew they had removed my, my name, but they haven't. Well, anyway, who we are today, we would like to be the owner of that facility. Juneteenth is a national holiday. We have the largest organized Juneteenth in the state of Texas. And for us to be on the map and hold that title and people come through Odessa and say, this is, they have the largest Juneteenth, we would like to go see some Juneteenth memorabilia or purchase some T-shirts. Where do you go? We, we have nowhere. We need a home and we want that to be our home. Now, I know you'll say, well, if we give you that building, how would you fund the building? When you look at the rentals, there's no doubt in anyone's mind that that facility would be rented every weekend. But we don't want just for the rental, we want, we want to open it Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from ten to two so that people can come and see all we have to offer. If there's a meeting, I mean, that would have been a great headquarters when COVID hit for our community. They would have known just where to go and get information on COVID. The, the monies from the, the monies generated from the rentals is what we would operate, uh, the, the center with. Right now, we are, um, if you look in your packet of information I gave you, we have two letters of support, one from the Odessa Arts, and then the other one is from the FMH Foundation. We are in close contact with them probably every week. They do know that we are here today asking to be, uh, the owners of that facility. They promised us that if we get that building, I mean, they're, they're big supporters of ours. So, anytime we want to bring in artists or arts or exhibits, the FMH Foundation, they're our friends. And, uh, in fact, they're waiting to see what action we take today, if we get the building or not, so that we can work together and try to bring things in for our, our community. Can I ask Attorney Gavin Norris to come up? Can I?
Real quick, um, what is the FMH Foundation?
FMH Foundation is a very prestigious foundation in Midland. They believe in giving back to the arts, they support the arts. Uh, the FMH Foundation, you don't go and ask them for funding, you have to be invited to, uh, to, to get, uh, funding from them. We, um, our organization, we knew nothing about them. Last year, when we bought in the Dallas Black Dance Theater, in the dancers just packed the amphitheater, they were there and they were watching us. After that, they invited me to lunch and they said, we've been watching you, we've been watching the organization, we see the quality of programs, we want to help. And I said, okay, all right. They asked us, they said, what, what would y'all, what was the organization like? We said, well, this is the first year that we're going to have Juneteenth, that it, it, it's become a national holiday. One of the main things that we would like to do is for our kickoff Juneteenth celebration on June fifteenth, we would like to have a mega gospel, uh, concert. They asked me how much it will cost. I told them, on Thursday, they called and they said, congratulations, we have awarded you the money for a concert. That's the kind of people that serve on the FMH Foundation.
Attorney Gavin Norris, you have a thought?
Hey, John, while he's coming, are y'all planning to also use this to have your meetings? And will this be your headquarters as well?
If that's our home, everything, that's, we'll have everything there that we can.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, I guess evening now, council, mayor council. Um, I'll be brief, I don't stand here to talk for Ms. Littleton. If you know her, she can speak well enough for herself. Um, I do stand, I was asked to come and in full disclosure, I'm not a member of the Black Cultural Council Board, however, I do advise them in a legal capacity and have done for, uh, since I've got a, a baby attorney. And, um, so, but we do work closely and we talk on a weekly basis on things regarding the Black Cultural Council. Uh, one of the things, as Councilman Motta mentioned, I've had several conversations with Ms. Littleton regarding this project and what some of the functions, or she spoke to what, uh, they would like to do. But one of the things she didn't mention, and Councilman Motta spoke on it, Councilman Mudda spoke on it as well, is the cultural impact to the community that this will have. As you, as has been stated by mayor and several of the council members, this is a historical facility. Gertrude Bruce has a historical significance to a community that at a time when there was segregation really helped, uh, provide a service to a community that has benefited several people within that community. And as integration has taken services out of District One, out of Murphy Street, this is one of those, uh, facilities that still has provided, um, cultural impact, cultural programs. I can remember from being a young kid, all the cultural activities that have taken place in that building. So, it's sad to see it in such a state of disrepair. I wanted to take this moment to just talk about the cultural impact specifically for what it would mean for the Black Cultural Council. The, in and of itself, the name of the Black Cultural Council is to provide cultural awareness, cultural activities. People like Ms. Bruce have impacted this community in so many ways. And to have a facility that can highlight not just the history of Odessa, the history of the country, but local Odesses that have made an impact. I did a little research before I came here on who Ms. Bruce, uh, actually impacted. Here's a few names. Uh, and councilmen, they're all from District One. Debra Peoples, grew up South Side, Odessa, is, uh, retired as a senior vice president for AT&T. She was impacted by Ms. Bruce. Mary Ellen Whitlock, she's a pioneer as one of the first state judge of women, state district judges. And she retired as one of the first black female judges in, in the state of Texas. Gary Bledsoe, he's the, he's from South Odessa. He grew up as the, the, uh, he's the director of this Texas State NAACP. He's champion, uh, rights of, of civil rights, both in Texas and across the country. When I was in DC, in my experience there, we ran across each other several times. But most importantly, he's from Odessa. His last stint was as the, uh, prestigious, prestigious and esteemed dean of the Thurgood Marshall School of Law at Texas Southern University, a his, a historically black college and university. What's even more significant is as my, my, uh, college, uh, my college alumni here sits with, with me, um, this is a school that promotes and graduates the, the per capita, the, the most African-American and Hispanic law students in the entire state of Texas. So, uh, pretty significant there. Debbie Jackson, she's recognized, and if you look her up, the first female in the state of Texas to be a deputy attorney, uh, AG for the compt, for the comptroller and the first African-American woman. She's from Odessa. State Representative Yvonne Davis, she's been a state legislator, she's right now the number three or four oldest serving state legislator in the state of Texas. She's served for twenty-nine and now going on thirty years. She's from District One, South Side, Odessa. And it's apropos to say this as it's in my notes, Dr. Greg Williams. Those are the things that when I spoke with Ms. Littleton, the people that we would like to highlight, it, not just, uh, folks within the community that we, we celebrate on a large scale, but Odessa has made a cultural impact in this community, in this state, and in this country. The, the reality is, most of those people's names you've probably never heard of until I just mentioned it to you. But how wouldn't it be great to have a facility where we can highlight Odessens in a facility that, that shows the impact that we have, not just in the state, but on the world? So, as you consider this, the ask today is that you grant the BCCO's request, grant them this facility so we can have something that can continue to be a beacon of light to the world from our great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
But the proposal is that we give, uh, building, we, we take ownership of the building?
So, give over title to the, uh, to, to, to the Black Cultural.
Yes, sir.
As is? As is?
No, no, ma'am. Ma'am. No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
So, so, so give us a proposal, what, what's your proposal?
Our proposal is that the city of Odessa repair that building and then give it to the Black Cultural Council of Odessa.
You know, clear, clear and tight.
Yes, sir. I know that there's some questions about insurance. And at the time that the, uh, the water line burst and everything, the, the, uh, the previous tenants did not have insurance. Well, we've already been working on insurance. We've contacted InSource, uh, Holly at the insurance agency because we wanted to be prepared when we got here today. But she instructed me as, uh, I mean, there's no way we could get insurance to be here today because we're not even the, the, that's not our building. So, how can we get insurance on something that's not ours? All of the information that she provided me, she also shared it with, uh, Barry, Barry Wooton. So, I mean, we've been in touch as to the insurance and how would that work? But it wasn't because we didn't try as an organization.
I understand, I, I don't think that that's pertinent at this point, uh, for the reason is that it would only be pertinent if you owned the, uh, the organization, owned the building outright and you, you'd be responsible for the, for the, uh, for the insurance, not the city. Councilmember, would you want to be able to, you want to talk to us?
I, I just want to make sure I understand Ms. Littleton's request. Typically, on, when we work and partner with nonprofits, we enter into long-term leases. Uh, they would be responsible for the maintenance, upkeep, and insurance, uh, like the prior organization that unfortunately didn't. So, I just want to make sure I understand her request, that you're requesting ownership and not a lease agreement.
We don't want a lease, we want ownership of the building.
Yeah.
But we want the, the building, um, we want the building, uh, we want it fixed. We want it fixed before we take ownership, if that's possible.
Natasha, can we do that?
Honestly, it's the first time that I'm hearing ownership. I, I heard that it would be a city-owned property lease. And so, that's something we can look into in legal, but, um, this is the first that we hearing ownership. Most of the, um, buildings that we have like this, and even previously, it's a city-owned property, but it's a very long-term leases.
Would that be a problem if it's a long-term lease?
No, ma'am, it wouldn't. And the reason why we wanted to own the building is because several council meetings ago, I was listening and I listened real good, real, real good, and I heard someone say, the city wants to get out of, get out of the business of leasing and long-term leases with buildings for reasons that just happened. The water line busted, the tenant didn't have insurance, and it was a big problem. That's the only reason why we did that. But if we can't own the building, we gladly take a long-term lease, we would.
I would be interested, though, to see if that is a possibility to transfer ownership. We'll look into it. And, and for that reason, just because otherwise we're still in for maintenance cost and overseeing the lease agreement. But, you know, perhaps if there was, if that is a possibility, if there's something in there to where, you know, we could donate that property, however, have something that if you guys, um, decide you want to sell it or whatever, that there have to be some stipulations, it can't be a for-profit.
Well, and I, and I, we're a nonprofit organization and our bylaws, it says that, and in the, in the case that our organization disbands all of our assets or whatever we have, has to be given to another nonprofit organization. It can't be sold.
And we get, of course, included in verbal language and things like that.
Yeah, like I said, that, I, I think that that, I mean, I'm looking at Michael and he's not even wanting to look at me. I mean, I would think that might be something that, you know, I know that we have talked about it in the past that, you know, maybe trying to phase out our ownership of some properties or under that lease. And Scott's probably clicking his heels, you know, where, uh, that wouldn't be something that, um, we would then be responsible for that maintenance. Sounds like a good plan, but...
Hey, Michael, is there a, is there any, if there's a historical building, are there funds available to refer?
There might be, and Ms. Littleton may be able to answer this. Do you, do you know if that is registered with the state historical preservation?
That's my question.
I do not know, but at the time that we, it became a historical, um, facility, Ms. King was in charge of that. And I'm pretty sure Ms. Grace King would know if it's a historical.
There's two distinctions, there's a local historical society.
Right.
And then the Texas. And then there's the Texas one.
Right.
If you are designated as a state historical property, then you would have to follow the state historical reservation guidelines.
I bet you're aggressive, anyway.
I think she knows.
If we had, if we had funds or ways to do that, do it that way and then turn it over to them, it would have to be a proper thing to do. And my way of thinking, I just, you know, if we'd get some funds to refer the version form under historical society to the local state and then maybe be able to turn it over to, I, I'm not interested in leasing here because same thing happens, it happens, nobody had, nobody was checking up to watch the city, the insurance was kept up to date and it falls in cracks and the building breaks and, and so, there's no, and there should have been insurance there to fix that because it had some, you know, valuable, valuable flooring from what I saw, if nothing else, so.
I would guess the only little tricky part, though, is it would be the ownership of the building and it sits on public land and when the parking lot is with the city, is that correct? And so, I mean, that just may be something, I mean, that just may be a technicality that...
And I think that's something that can be worked out in, in an...
I would too.
So, if, if, if I'm hearing council right, so, one, we need to check for the historical, uh, the Texas Historical Society, uh, National Registry for Historical Society to see if it, uh, doesn't, because there's, it's a stringent, uh, to, to, to meet that registration. Then two, then the other one, if it is, and then, then basically that changes the co, the whole conversation about ownership and things of that nature. The other one is to, uh, we have some rough cost estimations for the, uh, the re, renovation. And then to, uh, look at it as a long-term lease versus, uh, investing into the renovation and then donating the building. And then that question is the building, the land, and any adjacent property, uh, that is, uh, tied in, in with the building. And so, those, 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 uh, the guys that build are the things that we're going to want you to, to, to look over. And then, uh, they're going to look at it and then, uh, we'll bring it back at, uh, at their, their next meeting's another work session. Is there anything else you want to add?
I, I just wanted to know, we were talking about the, um, you know, the, the shape of the building. Um, it's a city-owned building, so I know that it's insured.
Want to speak to that, Michael?
Yes, we do have insurance. Uh, unfortunately, the deductible for any occurrence is a hundred thousand dollars.
So, it would be an expense.
It's a wash.
It would be a, yeah, it's a wash.
But, you know, I guess actually, though, whether we intend to turn it over or not, if we're going to do anything with it at all, we have to, we're going to have to repair it.
And, and I don't think there's even a question about if, it's not a building that we, the city can afford to lose. It's a, so, I mean...
Yeah, it's, we did look into the insurance part of it and, um, I mean, with the, being the cost of the same as the, uh, as deductible, we'd be able to just pay it, uh, without using the insurance, so our premium will go up also, so.
The building, the, the building qualifies for, uh, it qualifies for, um, community block grant funds, does it? That's question.
Well, it did, it did in the past, but there was more available money in those days. But there was more available money in those days. And in any of those days, it took, you know, three cycles.
It went to your question, Mrs. Stemp, or Littleton, it would be a little possible, is any qualified census tract, I mean, will we be considered an heir of the family?
Yeah, that is an option, uh, but money's, there's a lot less money now than it was in those days. Any last, any else you have?
No.
Any last discussion?
Thanks for the presentation, Littleton, let us get back and revisit with about the ownership and the, and the long-term lease, just to clear that, share all that information up there.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, council mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's get back to that. We are back on item five, consider purchase of two zone, two rescue lines, and we're gonna ask you, Judge.
Greetings, uh, mayor and city council and staff. Uh, I'll be brief, a good evening. Uh, yeah, Chief Huber also wanted me to extend his apologies, he had a, a, a conflict come up, so he just wanted me to make sure you don't do that. Uh, so what we're asking for consideration from you guys today is two zone monitors, um, that will be supplying engine nine and rescue nine. Um, these, they're gonna be two different units, the s- the same thing, uh, each unit's gonna be a little over forty-two thousand dollars, you can see. Uh, with a total price of a little over eighty-four thousand. Uh, these will be purchased through the H J A C Purchasing Cooperative Fund. Uh, these zone monitors, uh, just to kind of give you a little overview on them, they, uh, obviously, it's a, it's a techn- technological type of device. That gives uh, just life-saving measures, diagnostics, uh, it has a built-in A E D, uh, I'm sure that y'all might be aware of. Um, it does a lot of other functions, it sends, uh, transmits twelve leads to our physicians so they can actually see, uh, you know, cardiac rhythms that they need to treat and such. But that's, that's briefly it, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on these two devices.
What's the cost?
Total cost is gonna be eighty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
This will be coming out?
Uh, this is gonna be out of the H J A C Purchasing Cooperative.
Counsel, any questions? Comments, any direction? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to item six, consider resolution to amend the budget and appropriate, uh, appropriate transfer two million from the Stormwater Water Fund, the Capital Project, um, Fodderland retention base. Mr. Kerr, good morning.
Yeah, good sir. Morning, Mayor Council. Uh, so, in the last couple of weeks, we've been talking to you about the North Fodder Contention Fund project. And uh, you've actually made an award to honest, uh, contractors to build that project. In those discussions, we talked about an overall budget for that project, the five point seven million dollars. Three point seven million dollars will be out of the twenty nineteen C O obligation funds. And uh, and two million dollars was to come from the uh, uh, Stormwater uh, Fund balance. And so this resolution is uh, to amend the budget and appropriate that transfer of two million dollars from the Stormwater Fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund for this project.
Counsel, any questions? Any direction? Mr. Schwalz?
I think.
Tom, any doubts?
Uh, this is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to item seven, consider adopting an update of downtown master plan for the city of Odessa. Philip, you guys two minutes?
Two minutes, alright. Don't start until I get hit my presentation though, give me a second.
Okay, give, give an extra minute.
Extra minute there again. Uh, Mr. Mayor Council, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss our downtown master plan. I did have a uh, a brief overview of the plan, but I'll keep it short in the uh, the interest of time. And we'll have Kim Lee Horn with us next week, who is the uh, design consultant for this uh, for this uh, project. Also presenting the plan and a more uh, up, up, uh, in-depth uh, presentation. Uh, our last downtown master plan was completed in two thousand sixteen. And uh, since that plan was adopted, uh, we've had several items that have been accomplished within that plan. So our Turge Board uh, looked at that plan and initiated an R F Q sequence to uh, to update the master plan. And uh, through interviews and selection of firms, uh, they, they came down to Kim Lee Horn and uh, the board and the council approved a uh, an expenditure of eighty-five thousand for the downtown master plan. And the master plan started in late summer, early fall of uh, of last year. We were supposed to have an agreed beginning time of the plan, but of course, with uh, many things, we ran into delays due to, to COVID and being able to have in-person meetings. But we do have a, a final plan that has been adopted by the uh, the Turge Board and will come to the council. Uh, just as a, as an overview of the uh, master planning process, uh, there were opportunities for uh, the community to provide um, input through online surveys. There was also a mapping tool that was provided for downtown, where if you saw um, items that needed to be corrected downtown, what needed to be added, suggestions, you could drop those in. So that uh, public engagement was available, uh, for those that may, um, were not able to attend our public engagement meetings. Uh, we did have nine public engagement meetings that were held at the conference room at the police department. And we had uh, good turnout at those events, we had several uh, downtown business owners, we had um, citizens attend, we had elected officials, uh, both city and county level, uh, attend. Which was, was great to get uh, get their input for uh, for downtown. We did also stream those meetings and we did have some, some hiccups through the process of streaming, but we tried to make it as accessible as we could to, to individuals. Uh, through the master plan, uh, the staff, uh, including our parks department, engineering, traffic, city manager's office, all had the opportunity to also review the plan. Uh, and provide input of items that we also saw were needed for the uh, for the plan. Uh, just, just briefly, uh, the, the plan consisted of three phases. The first was to, to validate the existing plan that uh, is in place and just to see what um, what was accomplished, what was not. Uh, and then jumping into those workshops that we just uh, just went over. And then the next uh, part was uh, drafting the, the existing plan, uh, the new plan and uh, preparing that for adoption by both the uh, the Turge Board and the council. Uh, this is the beginning portion of the uh, of the plan. Uh, this was something that was important for the Turge Board and I wanted to share this with the council, I know Kim Lee Horn will share it as well. Uh, but it, it describes uh, about forty million dollars worth of public improvement that has, has taken place downtown, whether it's uh, tech stop work, city work, investing into infrastructure, our PSOC grants through the O D C program. So there has been a lot of uh, of an investment downtown. Uh, the plan also details over seventy public events that have taken place since two thousand sixteen that were publicly sponsored. And as well, as well as forty-two billion businesses that were open downtown. Uh, there were several strategies that were covered within the plan. Uh, the first was uh, branding and marketing, uh, that was uh, the, the first item that came out of all of the meetings to ensure that uh, we continue to, to not only uh, utilize the branding that we have in place through our D O I board. But also to improve our, our marketing and selling what we're doing um, downtown. Uh, item two was wayfinding, uh, wayfinding is one of the items that was uh, was on the top priority list as well. Uh, letting individuals know coming to downtown where parking is at, where the convention centers at, where the hotels are at in our areas, uh, improving our, our wayfinding. Uh, there was heavy uh, presence on uh, on our pedestrian scale and our, our grant corridor. Uh, introducing landscaping that uh, will not interfere with power lines, that uh, can be seen by businesses that's easily maintainable. Uh, lighting, additional lighting for, for downtown, so that, that covered our, our pedestrian scale uh, areas there. There was discussions about an arts and entertainment district, and so as we uh, continue to improve downtown, having roads that can be easily closed, um, for, for festivals and things of that nature downtown. And Kim Lee Horn will go more into depth on how we close those roads, what those roads will look like as, as for part of a, an arts and entertainment district. There was also discussion on our current parks that we have downtown, uh, Progressive Park, Noel Plaza, ensuring that those are programmed correctly, that we have the uh, the uh, the resources needed there to, to continue to offer those open spaces. And also collaborate with uh, other groups such as Odessa College through the next phase, which is the cultural and art integration. So having uh, an ability to, to have uh, partners such as, as Odessa College come in and also providing uh, an area for the arts downtown. Whether it's a space to house artists in, in downtown and provide funding for artists to, to be part of our, our downtown. Uh, there was strategy provided for uh, bringing residential properties to downtown. And that consisted not only of uh, of urban housing, but also uh, continuing to address the issue of workforce housing in our community. Uh, there were various steps that uh, were addressed, including identifying spots for uh, for housing. Uh, the uh, next item was uh, was partnerships and so utilizing our downtown Odessa group as well as uh, our Turge Board to continue to uh, to strengthen partnerships downtown. Uh, one of the items was to, to continue not only the marketing of downtown, but working with, with groups outside of the, the city, Odessa College, Hector County, to, to bring um, to bring uh, more to uh, to downtown. And the last strategy that was covered was the uh, the parking strategy. And that's something that's been resounding through the, the Turge Board and that we've heard from citizens in the uh, the public meetings of having uh, more parking. And so there was uh, areas identified within the plan for future service parking, uh, potential uh, parking garage type parking. But also on our on-street parking, which we've already started to do, having more turnover. So utilizing technology, uh, possibly upgraded parking meters that can be monitored a little bit easier, but just ensuring that there's uh, there's parking for, for our downtown. Uh, but with that, I was just a uh, a quick overview of what will be presented next week, again, Kim Lee Horn will be here and they'll be able to answer further questions.
Yeah, council, any questions, comments? You want my, Philip, to go do it, do it again? Okay. It's white, want to do one more time?
Martin, okay, very good.
Thank you very much, Philip. We're gonna move on to item A, consider managing the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two for, to appropriate additional funds for the water sewer fund. Ms. Muntz?
Good afternoon, this agenda item is to amend the budget for the Water and Sewer Fund for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. To make the uh, first year's payment on their certificates of obligation. Uh, if you'll recall, these were sold after the time that we had adopted our budget and so they weren't included in the budget. So this is appropriating the money for that. Um, and we're appropriating out of fund balance, we do have fund balance available to do that. The total amount is two million, three hundred and ninety-four dollars, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, seventy-two cents. We make one payment coming up March first, it'll be uh, a million thirty-five-nine, no, a million thirty-four thousand. And the second one will be in September, a million thirty-five-nine. And I will, if you have any questions you might have.
What was the second date?
September first. All of our debt service payments fall March first and September first. March first includes interest and principal and September first is strictly interest payments.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? City, you want to add anything else?
No.
Would you be the last, Jim?
No, is there anything additional, no, would like presented at the council meeting for this, I'm pretty much a housekeeping type.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Schwalz, any last?
Nope, well, you got it. I have to move to your turn.
Okay, see, there's still more business before the city council, I have a motion to, sir, for council members' pro, second by Councilwoman Mata. All in favor, indicate it by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicate it by saying nay. Motion passed, you may enter.